Minute after seven, so sorry for being late.
No problem.
But all the meaning to order and invite everyone to please rise. Join us in the Fledge of Allegiance. Fledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its midst.
Thank you. Eric, did you call it all?
Sure.
Jim?
Here.
James Shiloh?
Here.
Lucian Koppel?
Here.
Alex DeVito?
Here.
Beth Maria Evans? Alex Kratos?
Here.
Eric Jones, present. Forbes, present.
Are there any changes to the agenda as proposed? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as proposed?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Koppel?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Kratos?
Yes.
Jones, yes. Dobek?
Yes.
Motion carries.
NIA consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the NIA consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Koppel?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Kratos?
Yes.
Jones, yes. Dobek?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Public hearing. Would you want to make a statement?
I do. I have one. Yep, I have one slide that I need to talk about really quick. This is Public Act 102-0895. It requires all school districts to read their current cash balances at a public hearing. So I'll just go through these really quick and read them. The education fund is five million, seven hundred, five thousand, thirty-four dollars. Operations and maintenance fund is two million, four hundred, seventy-nine thousand, two sixty-eight. Transportation fund, six million, six fourteen, seven sixty-four. The retirement fund is two million, six hundred, twenty-four, forty. And the working cash fund is four million, six hundred, ninety-eight thousand, nine eighty-one.
Alright, thank you. Now that the public hearing has been opened, is there anyone who wishes to speak on the levy this evening? Records should reflect that no one has indicated a desire to speak on the levy. Is there anyone who would like to present written materials that address the levy? Again, the record should show that no one came forward with written materials. I'll close the public hearing then, and we'll move on to Spartan awards, which I suspect is why many of you are here.
We're gonna start with middle school Spartan awards, so I'll invite Mr. Clavon, middle school principal, up to start us off.
This fall, we had a very good music program, and we have three groups of students to have awards tonight, so I'm gonna introduce Mrs. Tanaki, and she's going to bring up the students and also give you the details of how well they did.
Thanks. Good evening. My name is Amy Tanaki. I'm the orchestra teacher here at the middle school. Tonight, I'm representing all the music, so band, orchestra, choir, and jazz band. So in October, students have the opportunity, if they wish, to do an above and beyond audition. So they get some music, and if they want to audition, they send in a video. And then they are, if they're selected, we get to participate in a festival, which is on a weekend. There's three separate weekends that they took place. So some students auditioned for more than one group, because they're extra, extra awesome, and participated. This year, we had fifty-seven middle school orchestra, band, choir, jazz band students that were selected, which is one of our largest amounts in recent history, so that's really exciting. I know lots of them are here. I see them out there. Lots could not be here, because they're all awesome kids that do all kinds of things. So I have their names. I could read all fifty-seven names if you want me to, or we could have them all say their name as they come up here, because that could be cool, too. I didn't tell them that, so now they're like, what? So how about, do you want all the band, orchestra, choir, and jazz band students, if you would come up here? So would you prefer I read all their names, or do you want them to say their names?
I think it's best if you read them.
Okay.
Go a little bit faster, maybe.
Okay, I'm gonna read all names. I don't know all these names, so good luck to me.
Just keep coming down, and you'll hear your name when you hear your name.
Perfect. Okay. Or should we have, can they just come to you as I read names?
You can do that?
Yeah, go for it. So for choir, we had Ella Adwell, Haley Bright, Miles Doty, Eliza Hagmeyer, Kaylee Heisner, Lily Henkel, Claire Hoa, Cohen Jennings, Natavia Lark, Ava Lewis, Fiona Long, Rosemary McConkey, Vivian Meyer, Miles Music, Taylor Peabody, Savannah Schuman, Madeline Solomon, Bradley Warfer, Chase Wickerly, Quinn Wymer, Wimer, Wymer, Aslan Wisniewski. Those are our choir students. For bands, we have Lola Fox, Foxa, Wow. Bronen Butler, so sorry, friends. Ben Fritzenreiter, Aleph Tolu, Blalung, thank you. Alina Gilson, Haley Herman, Daniel Quah, Max McGinnis, Bailey Rundle, Garrison Spencer, Hunter Venata. For jazz band, Benjamin Fritzenreiter, David Ruse, Hunter Venata, again. For orchestra, oh, you beat me, okay. Chase Ashley, Kane Craig, Alison Deutsch, Lucas Debois, Jenna Hendricks, Claire Hoa, Charlotte Huesman, Camden Johnson, Brooke Kelm, Oscar Klesek, Andy Krulik, Ellie Lawless, Isaac Martinez, Rosemary McConkey, Caitlin Page, Jane Pickard, Gus Rebe, Leo Robinson, Silas Ruckert, Callum Swan, Mallory Tallickson, and Mia Tanaki. That's all of them. Good job.
Pretty sure that was middle school, right? So ready to move on to high school, alright. I'd encourage you to welcome Mr. Bolster from the high school to talk about high school students.
Yeah, it was a busy fall at the high school. Mr. Carrick, our athletic director, is at a basketball game tonight. So he sent me, so it was a very successful athletic fall season at Sycamore High School. So at first, I wanna bring up Molly Allison from girls' swimming. Molly was a state qualifier in the hundred-yard freestyle and two-hundred-yard freestyle. Molly was fortieth in the four-hundred freestyle and twenty-ninth in the two-hundred freestyle. Molly Allison.
Sure.
So next is cross-country, boys' cross-country. Do I have any boys' cross-country here today? No? Naif Alharbi and Cory Goff were state qualifiers in the boys' cross-country. Naif was thirty-fifth in the state, and Cory was one-hundred-and-fiftieth in the state in boys' cross-country. Football. Are football guys here? So our football team had a very successful season, finishing the Sweet Sixteen in 5A. Coach Ryan, I'm gonna go ahead and read all of the names. Alright. Colton Sharpness, Thacker Friedrichs, Carter York, Tyler Curtis, Kyle Preble, Tyler Lockhart, Matthew Rangel, Diego Garcia, Miles Galindo, Burke Goucher, Teague Hallahan, Isaiah Fearbach, Royce Kratos, Jacob Shipley, Zachary Garing, Anthony Verdone, Aiden Burdo, Luke Howison, Ryan Rangel, Caden O'Donnell, Dylan Hodges, Connor Wright, Kevin Lee, Jack Block, Landon Egler, Joey Calata, Aiden Weiser, Dalton Rutherford, Jason Pangirbamb, Caden Wicks, Cooper Bodie, Vincent Pitstick, Hudson Cooley, Aiden Lobach, RJ Fakalfa, Dave Carrick, Cole Tetman, Christian Sparks, Tristan Countryman, Matthew Johnson, Julian Gobea, Dawson Gurley, Alex Garcia, Ethan Franklin, Gabriel Jovanovic, Ethan Smith, Jack Platito, Owen Depauw, Logan Statarziki, Michael Shimoon, and Victoria Shimoon. That was our first E football team. Coach Ryan would say 5A this year was one of the hardest in the state, and we fared very well. Next, Coach Bickley in a boys' tennis? Boys' tennis? Sorry, soccer, boys' soccer. Guys, come on up, come on down. Boys' soccer. Coach Bickley's Interstate Eight Conference Champions. Ryan Dzinski, Jesse Munoz, Noah Dakin, Carson Matthews, Gavin Crouch, Ethan Royer, Evan Fix, Joey Rosnow, Liam Tran, Ronaldo Sletzko, Diego Gonzalez, Jamison Carl, Chandler Gatton, Dylan Weitas, Aiden Sears, Javier Lopez, Rocco Monaco, Henry Bumpus, Tyler Loto, Caleb Emmert, Jose Aviles, and Eli Crom. That was our conference champ, boys' soccer. Girls' golf. Girls' golf. Girls' golf, first-ever Interstate Conference Champions in school history. Simone Bertrand, Brianna Shimoon, Meadow Davis, Chloe Granger, Taya Johnson, Samantha Maxwell, and Allison Schmidt. Brianna Shimoon was our IHSA state qualifier four times. Four-time state qualifier. She finished tied for thirtieth in the state Illinois. Coach Majeris in girls' tennis. Interstate Eight Conference Champions, IHSA sectional champions. Come on down, I'll read the three names. Madison Block, Abigail Burgess, Eli, Eli Davis, Addison Deschaux, Catherine Elsner, Marion Fisher, Grace Flohman, Caroline Harbeck, Annabella Johnson, Maya King, Margaret Klein, Addison Coons, Grace Majeris, Elizabeth McConkey, Addison Maglovin, Leila Musich, Jenny Nie, Reagan O'Sullivan, Carly Patton, McKenna Brineery, Courtney Richard, Jordan Tilstra, Ally Van Mists, Jetta Weaver, Caitlin Williams, Peyton Wright, and Taylor Zemanek. Jordan Tilstra was a state qualifier in singles, going two and two at state. Catherine Elsner and Elizabeth McConkey were state qualifiers in doubles, going one and two at state. And Jetta Weaver and Madison Block were state qualifiers in doubles, going two and two at state. Mr. Majeris?
Thank you. I just wanted to address the board and the audience about these girls, just because I like to promote these kids. Well, and thank the board and administrators for the invitation to come here tonight, to have these kids recognized and all of our great athletes and musicians in the district. And in the next thirty seconds, maybe fifteen, and Jim, you could put me on the three-minute clock if you'd like, just recognize nine recent graduates who weren't a part of this program last year, but set a school record for an undefeated season. They won sixteen matches. They were champions of the conference. They won the IHSA sectional title, and they finished in the Sweet Sixteen in the state tournaments. Those kids who are not with us anymore, Rebecca Allen, who are off at college or work, Abby B., Abby Bordage, Sophie Briscoe, Jersey Davis, Sabrina Zell, Abby Gonbielski, Elizabeth Klechner, Jenny Nie, excuse me, Yusha Nie, and Krishna Patel, along with these kids here who helped set that sixteen-to-no record last year, so thank you for that. The group here tonight picked up where we left off last season, but what's probably most impressive to me as a coach, and the genuine indication of their talents and how deep we were, we had eight different rosters in the first eight matches. So we had different people playing different spots due to illness and injury. And again, we've got kids, as I tell them, you'd be starting on almost every other team in the conference, but you guys are just that good. This is the only team that I know of in school history that won the conference freshman, sophomore, junior, and senior year, so kudos to them. Not only are they great skilled tennis players, but we've got great people representing Sycamore wherever we go. For the second year in a row, the program was named a finalist for the IHSTCA Tom Pritchard Sportsmanship Award, the highest for sportsmanship in the state during sports sectionals and state tournament play. Last year, Abby Gonbielski was awarded this, and this year, the doubles team of Kate Elsner and Lisa McConkey were recognized. I appreciate you guys for being not only great players, but more importantly, great people. And again, thank you for recognizing them tonight. Appreciate it.
I was silly enough to try to go out there and play with them, and I think they were laughing at me, but I thank you for doing that. Last, but not least, Coach Charles in volleyball. So IHSA regional champions, Grace Litchard, Reese Morgan, Chloe Shuld, Katie Jane Alexander, Kylie Walsh, Lacey Nice, Ava Carpenter, Sana, Farrah Fant, J.C. Thunderbird, Grace Hunt, Avery Curtis, and Elizabeth Shimoon, our ISAA regional champion volleyball team. Thank you, guys, for all your support. It was an awesome fall, and we're looking forward to a great winner's athletic season.
Great job, Avery.
Next item on our agenda is audience and visitors. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board on any particular matter? Next then is communications, correspondence, informational items, letters and newsletters. We have them? FOIA requests, there was one, respondent two. Suspension report. Natives are heading restless, yes? Committee reports.
SEF met last night. Normally, in the current cycle, I guess, right now, I think the biggest thing is that Taker is obviously the biggest fundraiser that they have, but very successful last year was the trivia night. So I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna put out there, save the date to Friday, February twenty-third. It feels like forever away, but we all know that that'll sneak up on us. There's a trivia night at Regal Center. You get a team. It's a really fun night. I know my wife got a chance to go last year, had it last, and I wouldn't say that she is really likes trivia all that much, so a shameless plug of getting a team together or maybe thinking of that as a possibility as we look into February. Talked about a little bit about offering alumni merch, so it's not something that the district has, but like something that's dedicated to alumni, whether that be a t-shirt, a hat, a mug, so you know, different ways that SEF can obviously use that to raise money, but I think, you know, alumni would like some merch from their high school. So that was a point of conversation last night as well, so any questions?
Are you putting a board trivia team together?
I, maybe, now that you've just said that, and then if you might be interested, okay, okay.
Is there a test?
I'll come up with a list of topics to be studying over the holidays. But yes, if you're interested, Eric, we can work on something.
Any other committee reports?
The ISB delegation met, and all of the resolutions proposed were supported as the ISB, or as our district endorsed, and as the ISB endorsed. And then the slate of officers, Mark Harms and Tracy Sayer, as proposed. Mark ran unopposed and was elected. Tracy ran opposed in what was a very unique nomination from the floor and a ballot from the person that spurred a really interesting debate. So that was something, but it was, but Tracy still maintained the nomination and the election as vice president. And then as far as like the resolutions went, industrial construction, school resource officer funding took most of the time. Those took about an hour and a half deliberation, until somebody realized that they could call to have a vote midway through the arguments. And as soon as that happened, and that was thanks to the parliamentarian, I had to look that up. They actually had a parliamentarian there, which was, I thought, really needed. So I'd love to meet somebody who does that, just so that kept things going. So anyway, yeah, smooth sailing.
Any other committee reports? Then the next item would be assistants superintendent for business services.
Thanks, Jim. Tonight is just a recap of our tentative levy discussion that we had. So I just have a couple slides that I wanted to go through, just as a reminder of what the current assumptions are in the levy that I'm asking you guys to vote on tonight. So current assumptions, CPI we're using is five percent. CPI was actually higher than that, but because we're a PTAL district, we're capped at that five percent. Our estimated EAB change from 2022 is nine percent. And then our estimated new construction growth within the school district limits would be eight million dollars. And then this next slide just shows what the increases that we're asking for from the counties. So we're looking at a six-point-one-zero percent increase for our aggregate extension, a point-zero-four percent decrease for our debt service extension, and then an overall five-point-oh-eight increase. Again, this is the amount we're asking for. That's not necessarily the amount that we'll get from the Brooks office. The next slide just shows our operating and our bond and interest tax rate. This is just for the school district portion, on, you know, you think your own homeowner's tax bill that you get. So our tax rate has actually gone down over the last four years. That doesn't necessarily mean that your bill itself has gone down, because that's all based on the assessment of your homes, which the school district has nothing to do with. So we just focus on the tax rate itself. So you can see it's actually going down, projected to go down twenty-seven cents for the school district's portion. And then we've always put this up here. You can kind of take a look and see what your assessed home value was last year, what it's going to be this coming year for 2023, and then the approximate decrease in your tax payment, again, just for the school district's portion on your tax bill. So going in a hundred thousand increments, you can see it substantially decreases as your home value goes up. Any questions on any of that? We had a lengthy discussion last time. And then this last slide, I just have the calendar. So tonight, I would ask the board to approve the final levy, and then we'll file those with the DeKalb and King County clerks. And then we get that levy and extension from the clerks in like end of March, beginning of April. That's when we'll know what our final extension's going to be. And then the tax bills will go out, and then the school district will start receiving them in June of next year.
Just out of curiosity, do you have a set amount or percentage that you balloon this levy? That's one thing I learned about the conference is ballooning the levy, so you don't miss out on capturing any additional revenue.
So I don't actually balloon the levy, but I make sure that we're gathering all the money that is owed to us. But I don't put anything in the balloon column.
Okay.
Any more questions? Is there a motion to approve the levy resolution as presented? So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Koppel?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Kratos?
Yes.
Jones, yes. Dobek?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alright, learning and teaching update. Assistant superintendent for HR.
What's Jim? I'm gonna invite Mr. Rice up, talk a little bit about just the state report card, map testing, and portability of a Spartan, and just kind of how all those things fit together.
Can you click for me? I can, yeah. So a couple weeks ago, Mr. Reinick asked me if I could present on all of these topics that are pretty significant, and then last night, he told me I had twenty minutes to do it. So I, you know me, those of you that see me present, I tend to be a little boisterous, a little off-track. But I'm gonna try to really keep this condensed tonight, not, not because I don't want to do it justice, but I know we're trying some new things out as a board. So if there are questions that you have for me, if I can't answer them tonight, I'll definitely follow up with you, and you'll hear at the end, unfortunately, you're gonna see me again in January to talk a little bit more about some of these items. So the very first thing I wanted to talk about with you tonight was the school report card. I know for some of you, this is review. For some of you, this is kind of the first time hearing about it in this context. The Illinois School Report Card, you can click to the next one already. It's kind of an aggregate that pulls a lot of data in and tries to basically give a grade, like we do to our students, to all our various schools. It looks at a lot of different types of information. There's academic indicators on that report card. It tells us about our school and district demographic information, and gives us some insight into our accountability. How are we spending our money? How are we using our staff? What are our pupil and staff ratios look like? And then the one that everybody always wants to hear more about are our summative designations. If you click again, kind of what we do to give them data that kind of brings all of that together, we use our student information system. So a lot of the information that we gather throughout the year as far as grades, attendance, discipline, anything along those lines, it's kind of housed inside our student information system, and that's uploaded to the state. There are surveys that we use. Five Essentials is the one that most of us have probably heard about the most, and that one, for example, will go into the information on the school report card. Some of the information is entered manually. Over time, the report card gets more and more robust. They're looking at kind of what post, students are doing post-high school. They're trying to find out, you know, what are they involved in? What sorts of opportunities do we offer as far as extracurriculars and some of our buildings? And so obviously, we just kind of input some of that. And then finally, HR does quite a few things as far as like what is our staff makeup? Who's worked here as long as they have? What do our evaluation ratings look like? And so all of those things are kind of given to the state. And they come back, and they give us, this is kind of just a very brief overview. You can click in and do so much kind of deep dive into the Illinois School Report Card. So if you just type into Google, Illinois Interactive Report Card, you get there, you can type in Sycamore 427. You can look at our schools individually, or you can look at our district as a whole. And this is our district snapshot. If you have been with us for a while, this really doesn't look that different than it has over the last few years. Obviously, you don't have any more schools than we typically have had. We actually went up, I think, a couple percentage points in graduation rate. I want to say we were ninety-two last year. I won't go through every single thing on here, but most of this doesn't change very often. We've talked about this in different avenues throughout the, I guess, different meetings. We've talked about this in different avenues throughout the, I guess, different meetings, but we have, we have stable enrollment, we have stable, a lot of things. Our district's pretty stable for the most part. There is a change on here that I think will probably draw most people's attention, and that is when we look at our summative designations. We have six schools that are commendable and one that is targeted this year, and I'll talk a little bit more about why that is, so if you click again for me, please. These, and I won't give these all to you, but you'll all have access to the, this presentation. This is kind of what makes up the school report card, the summative designation that's assigned to a school. And there's different rules that kind of happen at different times because of the way they're rolling this out. But these are all the various indicators that go in. In my seat, what I tend to look at most often are the academic pieces of those indicators, and that's what I'm gonna talk a little bit more about. Those are our summative designations. Again, most of our schools there are commendable, you'll see that Southeast did get that targeted kind of status. Nobody wants to see that, but to me, that's not cause for, I guess, it's not concern, but it's not cause for panic. What you'll see me talk about as we kind of explore the data a little bit more, what that means is basically the state's going to give us a little bit of extra money, which nobody is gonna refuse. To do some of the exploration that we would do anyway. I sat on a webinar today, this is our first, my first time working with a school that's in that status. And basically, we have a year to do the things that we would do anyway, which are look at our data, look at what's going on and why our scores maybe aren't where we want them to be. Where are the holes, where are the things that we're doing really well? And how do we take that entire picture and then move forward next year? And basically, all that is is school improvement planning, which we do every year in every single school. So while nobody wants to see that targeted thing flash up there, in a way, it actually gives us even more opportunity to dive even deeper into some of the conversations that we've been having. So I'm sure there'll be some questions about that, I'd be happy to follow up as I can. We are a targeted school because of one of our subgroups. The subgroup that didn't perform as much as we hoped they would would be our students with disabilities. So this, that group is one that we'll definitely look into a little bit more. And on that note, I want to talk a little bit in transition, I guess I should have said this upfront, I tried to kind of build this surveying flow together. So if you have a question, feel free to ask me, but I kind of want to move into the math piece of this next, because it'll kind of support some of this data here. This is on our school report card, the top part, this is our ELA performance. The top part is our entire, I just stuck with Southeast here, I kind of talked a little bit more about why we got that designation. That's how our students in grades three, four, and five performed on our ELA, part of the IAR, the Illinois Assessment of Readiness. And the bottom part is if you just look at our students with disabilities.
What students take the IAR?
Three, four, and five, and then I'll six, seven, and eight.
Okay.
So on the top part is basically the school in general, the bottom part is our students with disabilities. Without much work on that graph, you can look at it and see, there's a lot more red on that graph than we'd want to see. There's some students that don't, we don't, in the third grade and fifth grade, we don't even get past the yellow mark. So that, we know that, and then our students, those students need more help than our average student. But looking at that graph, we can already see, and we would have seen whether we were targeted or not, that's a student group that we want to dig into and find out what's going on and how we better support them. If you click one more time, this is, it's the exact same graph, but this has to do with our math performance. And you see the exact same trend. We've got some third grades, some fifth grade there that's just not doing what we hope they would do. Because it's a subgroup, a subgroup's when you have any group of students, it's at least twenty. So it's a much smaller group, it's kind of a double edged sword. We're just over that mark, and that means that three, four, five, six students can really throw that bottom, like the colors off. Whereas the top part, you're looking at the entire school, so you have more room for error. But if you've got some students who either didn't do the best on the test that day, and we didn't take the test as seriously as we would hope they would, do have a true skill deficit. A few of those students have the ability to skew our data so much more when you're talking about a subgroup, than that would happen with that overall kind of top group that we're looking at. So what we do when we see that, that's when we start to look at a test like our math data, so that's what we'll kind of to go into there. So if you can skip this next slide. So what we do when we talk about math assessments, there's a lot of different things that we use them for, I'm gonna focus them just for the purpose of the presentation tonight. A little bit on how we kind of look at data and kind of do that a little bit more of a data deep dive, but we do a lot with these. We have another round of math assessments coming up, I think the middle school starts the end of this week and our elementary starts next week. After those assessments are given, pretty quickly after, we meet for what's called data days or team meetings. I was lucky enough to get to go and sit in some of those this year. This year, we structured them a little bit differently, all of our instructional coaches attended every single grade level data meeting, our MTSS core data was all of them. We tried to bring administrators in that weren't even in that school, so some of our high school and middle school administrators came down to our elementary meetings. Just because we're trying to make sure everybody in the district kind of knows what we're talking about and is able to engage with this data. So we use this to identify not only school level trends, but we also look at grade levels and we can drill all the way down to individual students. And that helps us out a lot when we start talking about how do we support groups of students, like that subgroup of students that didn't perform as well as we'd like them to have on the IAR. Or groups of students that are performing exceedingly well, what do we do for them? And I can kind of show you both ends of that spectrum tonight. You've heard us talk about win time before, a huge part of what comes out of this is kind of that initial planning for win, what I need groups. So that when we can start to look at how do we group these different students based on how they did on this exam or these math assessments? That's something that comes out of this. As far as what we're doing in the actual classroom, when we're talking about how we're setting up stations or groups, or how we challenge individual students or support other individual students. A lot of that comes out of this map assessment, and it's not the end all be all, you've heard me talk about it a little before, but it's a very, very good jumping off point for us. So if you take me a little bit further in, this is small, if you're on your screens, you can see a little bigger and you'll see it larger too, once you have this, you have all the time in the world. What's really nice about these map reports is you can click into so many of them and kind of drill down. We've done a lot of work over the last year to kind of work with not only our administrators, but also our teaching staff, to give them more information on how to use these reports. I'm a big believer in if you're going to take the time to administer any sort of assessment, if you don't take the time to look at the data and use it to drive your instruction, it's wasted time. So to me, spending that time really training our administrators and our teachers, and I should say retraining, it's not like they don't know how. But retraining is refreshing, how to use these has been really, I think, helpful for us. At the top here, you'll see, this is just, I say this Southeast, again, just for comparison's sake, as we're kind of talking about how we use this data. The top part here is our reading information, the bottom part here is our math. And down here, what you'll see is these different colors represent different percentiles. So it's a very quick visual way to look at, all right, in my school, at a specific grade level, how are my students doing compared to other students who took this test at the same time across the country? How are, how are my grade level doing? Things jump off the page automatically here. When we look at second grade, we want to look at that forty-four percent and say, why are they there? When we look at first grade here in math, we look at this thirty-seven percent, it's way above the average in math. Why, what are we doing and how do we replicate that? So this on its own gives us a ton of information that we can start acting like looking at, start talking to teachers, start looking at what's happening in classrooms. But we can go even further, so if you click this one more time, this is if I were to click that red forty-four percent. There should be another column here, it's all student names, I just wiped it off, and that's why it looks like it's cut off that way. But we would have each student's name, what their percentile was, how they did on the assessment, and then some other information with them, if there are any sort of special programs. What their demographic information is. From this page, we can click even further down, which I'm actually gonna do and kind of do it for my son, I asked him, he said it was okay. So I can show you what it would look like if I were to click on any single one of these students. But again, in data days, what we would spend a lot of time doing is pulling this group of students and going through. And not only do our teachers say like, yes, that's not surprising to me, or no, that is kind of a shock to me, I didn't expect my student to perform that way. But we start to group our students. And we start to see, and I'll show you again too, on a more interactive piece here in a moment, exactly what these students need to work on to start to grow up the ladder and start to be doing a little bit better so that they can improve. This looks ridiculous, I almost didn't put it on there, but I really wanted you to be able, the reason of these black boxes, it's all full of student names. So one of the other ways that the math information comes back to us is, all along these top, these little boxes along the top are bands. It's basically another way of looking at those color coded ones I just showed you. And then down the side are different skill groups that we are talking about with students. So here on the bottom, we've got reading literary text, informational text, and vocabulary. And what this would do for a teacher, for interventionist, for principal, for me, is it shows me, all right, in this second grade classroom, as far as dealing with literary texts, here's how I can group my students. And so as I'm planning instruction for my students, as I'm planning what the core thing is going to do for the entire classroom, and then I'm gonna talk about how to pull this small group and extend for that small group. It's showing me almost exactly how I can do that. Now, every single one of our teachers could do that without this, because they know our students. And this isn't the only assessment that we give, there's so many more local assessments, there's day-to-day things that they're doing, there's exit tickets, there's conversations, but this is just another data point. And sometimes it's nice to have a data point that's not so connected to your curriculum, that can kind of just tell you whether or not you're on track or not. Another time I can come back and talk a little bit more about the linkage studies between students' performance on math and how they'll eventually do on the IAR and even the SAT. So this is a, this is an assessment that it doesn't drive everything through, but it's almost like a checkpoint, or it validates some of what we do. If I have a student that I think is doing awesome, but they take this assessment and they score really low, that's cause for me to kind of check. Okay, let's have a conversation with that student, am I really off in my interpretation? Did they have a bad test day, what's going on there? So again, I just want to reiterate, this isn't the end all be all, but it's hugely helpful for us in just kind of checking on the things that are already good. I'm gonna click one more time, here's where I want to talk a little bit about some, just some other things that this can do for us, and I'm gonna have to log in.
So let's go back.
This is under Steve. It is, okay, I'll just show you Owen's and you go from there. So I'll show you what an individual student does, and I can talk about all the same things, I'll just use it a different way. So again, I have his permission, I'm not sharing any details, but nobody would want me to. This is basically, what I was going to show you before this was basically an aggregate of this, but this is really the most powerful report that this gives us. This is an individual student report, so this is my son, this is, right now, what we're looking at is mathematics, and it's giving us what he scored. So in mathematics, his RIBAD score was a one ninety-one, I'm not doing this to brag on him, but it was fairly good. So again, kind of, this system can help us not only help our students that are struggling, but it shows us how to challenge our students that maybe are doing quite well. There's a couple of things that a teacher has, or anybody that's using the system has at their disposal, that I just kind of wanted to point out with this, as ways that we use this to kind of do deep dives into the data. So first of all, if we click and look a little bit more at just kind of some of the, his metrics, right? This is a really powerful graph that we get here, this is kind of a horse rare graph. What you want is all as many of our students in that green box as we can get. As we come closer to me on that graph, that's how well the student is doing on the assessment. As we go further up the graph, that's how much they've grown since the last time that we gave it. So what we really want to see are students that are scoring well, but also getting a lot of growth. What you don't want is what's kind of happening here with him, and that's probably more on me, because this is right after the summer, so this is not indicative of any of our teachers. It's a student that's doing really well, but they're not growing, because then they're gonna stay stagnant there. And another thing to think about with math, and I'm gonna say this for those that maybe have a little bit more knowledge of math. When it projects what a student should do, if a student makes that projection, it just keeps them even. It basically means they're gonna stay on the same exact track that they're on now. So what we really want to do is exceed that growth, that projected growth, because that shows that the student's really actually growing and they're not just kind of staying stagnant there. And that's a tricky one, because when we start talking about writing goals, or we start talking about, you know, students performing at a certain level, or having X percent of our students achieve their projected goals. That's great, and we want that, but we actually want to do better, because if we only do that, that means our students just stay flat, they don't get better. So that's, I can talk more about that for somebody whenever they want me to, but I just felt like I needed to say that here. This would tell us the same thing for math or reading, so if I click over to his reading, this one I will brag on a little bit more, because I read to him a lot this summer. So he's not only high growth, or high achievement, he's also high growth, so that tells me as a teacher, he's ready for more. He's growing, what we're doing is working, he's up there, but he's also growing and he's primed for that. So that's something that our staff uses quite a bit. The other piece that is really, really powerful, and it can do this in mass or it can do it by individual student, and this is really where the instructional planning comes in. So for every one of our students, they've got an overall score, but then in those same subgroups that I was showing you on that graph before, they have kind of an individualized, here's what to do for that student. Now, the one that wouldn't have loaded a minute ago, basically just has this as like a general, anybody that falls in these certain bands should get this. And so it's helpful for a teacher, I've got six students that fell in this band from two-ten to two-sixteen, here's what I do with them. They don't have to click in and do this for every single student, but it's gonna give them the exact same information. But what I do when I click on this, is it shows me exactly what, and it tells me he's ready for. So Owen is ready to start developing these skills. So wherever I may be in my curriculum, we talk about, you know, individualized learning, we talk about learner-centered education, there's a baseline and a floor of what we want every single student to be able to do in second grade. And if they're not there, that's the goal, but if they're there, what next? This is what's next. This is exactly what he's developmentally ready for, this is what he's showing, at least according to this assessment, and it is, it's just one day. But according to the assessment, he's ready to start working on these skills. The other cool thing you can do is click here and say, okay, what if I want to really push him? He's ready to start maybe introducing, and I'll scroll down a little bit to one of these. It's all right where my cursor is here, it's really, I can even on my screen. But you can start introducing these different skills, where they, they're telling me, this student's very, it's unlikely they'll master this yet, but they're ready to at least start learning about it. And so how does this tie back to our school report card data? So when we look back and you say, okay, we had some students here that didn't do as well as we hoped they would do. Teachers would be able to tell me one-on-one, like, well, this is what little Johnny needs, this is what little Susie needs. But as we start looking at this data, this is gonna help us know exactly where to start meeting them, where they are developing. It's not a shot in the dark, it's not us just doing what we've always done, it's saying, this student right here needs exactly this, so they can start to take that next step into them. So. It's probably a decent point to stop for some questions if you have them, because the next one's slightly different, it's definitely connected. But I just went over kind of a ton of stuff really quickly, how many, how many minutes was that? I think I was still at my twenty.
Nineteen.
Oh, man. All right, well, now I'm just going to the next, and you can ask it at the end. I've never missed, we've worked really, really hard as an administrative team, as an educational staff, with our community members, with our kids, to bring this portrait of a graduate that you've heard us talk about forward. So we finalized it, we're excited about it, we're working on the public launch, so I'm not gonna go super in-depth tonight, but you're gonna hear more from me in January, once that launch happens. But I want to talk at least a little about how this also reinforces what we do when we're looking at those students. So we shared this, what you're about to see with our staff in October. The goal this year is really just getting to know the elements of this learner, of this graduate profile. What does it mean? And really focusing on, we know here in Sycamore, we do a lot to already build learners that show the characteristics you're about to see. If it wasn't an accident, that this is pretty, you should be able to see within this our core values, if that was by design. And so these are things we've been working on for a very long time, and it's really just taking these kind of amorphous concepts of trustworthiness or citizenship, and what does that actually look like as a learner characteristic? So if you click for me one more time, what I just talked about with math are, these are the educational, instructional, academic outcomes that we hope all students can do. What we're looking at here is, in order to get to that point, our students need to have some skills or some dispositions or some characteristics that help them be engaged learners. And so working with the Institute of Personalized Learning, hearing from every single one of our staff at our February in-service last year, getting feedback from CAC, some of our students and their principal advisories committees. This is kind of what we came up with. Again, probably difficult to read up here on the page, but we're already kind of talking about how do we start to embed this in what it means to be a Spartan. What I shared with our staff, where there's some stats that right now are fairly lightweight. We know there's a lot going on for our staff right now, we know we're working on a lot of things, but we want this to be just kind of in the back of their minds. I've already had conversations with staff that have used this to change how they're teaching. Individually, we just asked every single staff member to explore those elements, what does it mean to them? How do they think they're already doing that in their classroom? And I'll talk about that a little more in a minute. What are their opportunities to further embed them? One teacher I was talking about, one of our, one of the things on the portrait right before I was flipping the slide here is collaboration. And the teacher said to me, you know, I really like what I do in my class, I think it's going well, I think my kids enjoy it, but I realized after I looked at that. But I realized after I looked at that, I don't have a lot of opportunities for them to work together or to collaborate or to do group work. And I think I need to do more of that if I really wanna hold up my end of the bargain. And that's exactly what we're asking them to do. Don't change everything you do. You don't need to. We're doing good things here. But if we know that these are the skills and dispositions we want our learners to have, how do we have to structure those learning activities so that they can develop those? So as individually, we've asked them to do that. As a PLC, kind of the same thing, but just as a team. As they're looking at their essential standards or their ICAN statements, how are they also planning instruction or planning opportunities for students that help them develop those skills? And we know they are. Because administratively, one of the things that we're doing is every month now, as an entire administrative team, they go to a different building. And we take an hour and we go through, we just walk in and look at the building and we look at different classrooms. Not only does that help us like learn from each other and know what's happening at different levels, but it helps us identify some of these practices that we know are happening already. And we're starting to develop a handbook of those. The end game for this is to be able to give that to our staff. See, these practices that are already happening here in Sycamore, we'll find some more that we can add to that as well. These practices will help in like build up these learners in this specific category or in this category or in this category. So if you're that teacher that, you know, I just wanna add more collaborative opportunities for my kids, but I don't know how, go right to this handbook and here's a list of things that you can do. Next step from that is, here's a list of staff in our, in our district that rock it and would love to have you come see what they do in their building. So that's stuff that's down the road, but that's where this is going. One more time, I think, and then I think I'm gonna miss that. So yes, so that's the big picture of our, or portrait of a graduate. I will come back in January. Hopefully I'll have a video to share with you. I could talk much more in-depth about this and we can celebrate that. Along with some of our teachers that have kind of taken up the torch and run a little further ahead. I think you've heard me talk about the Play Academy. And I'd love to highlight some of the work that's happening in those classrooms. So you can get a sense of, it's all well and good to hear me talk about it, but what does this actually look like in a classroom? And how is this impacting our students' experience? So I'll stop talking. If you have any questions for me, I'd love to answer them if I can. And if I can't, I'll get back to you.
Well, I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding this clearly. Only around forty percent in English and thirty percent in math of our students taking the IAR are proficient.
Yep.
Is that because they're not taking the test seriously?
There's a whole slew of reasons.
They're not, is the test too rigorous?
I, I think depending on who you ask, there's gonna be different answers to that. But I think there's a little bit of truth to all of it. I mean, I think it's, it's difficult to make sure every single curriculum in the States aligns to this test, but that's what we work on constantly. It's difficult when students don't take it seriously. It's hard. They, they don't realize the impact this will have on them. For a fourth grader, it means nothing, right? Like it, it means nothing to them. Now, when they get to the high school, they don't take the IAR, they take the SAT. Obviously, there's a little bit more skin in that game, especially for those that are college bound. They wanna do well on that assessment. So you're right, Alex. And that, those numbers are not something that I really like, feel great about. And that's why we continually will go back to our curriculum and are looking at how do we improve. We are right now, it's smack dab in the middle of both the math and ELA revision. So we're looking at our, our curriculum from K, our E C really, all the way up through twelfth grade and the resources that will support that. If you look at it, which again, I don't know if this is by design or not. I don't know enough about the IAR, I guess, but the state average on that test is only a fifty. And to me, that doesn't seem right either. We would want to do better than that. So no, I definitely noticed, definitely something we talked about quite a bit.
I guess something personally that would be helpful would be to sort of see how we compare to our districts that we typically compare against, such as Genoa, Kaneeland, Dickell, et cetera. Just to sort of have an idea of where they compared to us, so I can sort of show where the lines. And then go back several years pre-COVID to know, you know, how our scores are back then compared to now. And then the only other thing is, is there anything that you think on a board level we could do to help improve these, improve student achievement?
I think the support you give us now is great. I think just knowing that when we need something, we can come here. And I think as long as we're, you know, within our, our bounds and we make a good case for it, we, we feel that support. I think the fact that you listen to these sorts of conversations and wanna know what's going on is huge. So, you know, I think when there's something that comes up, we'll bring it to you and we'll ask. The support for that learner-centered education initiative is huge. To me, that's gonna make a massive difference here. And the fact that you're supporting that is, is big to me. I'm happy to get you anything you just asked for as far as that, all those analyses. But just so you know, you can do all of that on that website too. So if you don't wanna wait on me, if you wanna go home tonight, nerd out on it, go for it. But like you, cause you can pull up our data over the last, I wanna say six years, five years. There's no data over kind of those COVID years because they didn't give the assessment. You can also compare to other districts and you can do it by school, district, test. There's a lot of different things that this will write into that website. So again, happy to do it for you, but there'll probably be something, even if I do it for you, you'll have another question. And the interactive report card is pretty cool. It lets you do a lot of that stuff.
And this, this data was based on last year's academic performance. So there's no reason to suggest or assume that any discrepancies in that data or changes in that data would have anything to do with, for instance, like redistricting measures or anything like that. Cause this is looking past calendar year.
And I just, just, all this data is from third grade through eighth grade that we discussed?
I focused mainly tonight on third through fifth. But yes, like when you, the IAR goes all the way through eighth grade. There's also another assessment that I didn't talk as much about, but I should because our science folks deserve a ton of credit for it. The Chronicle made the same mistake I'm about to make and they didn't really talk about it. But our, our science crushes this data.
No, I thought that was off the charts.
Yeah. It's unbelievable. So I think that is a place where I think we can look at and really feel proud as a district at how our science is doing. And I owe that to our staff. I talked to our science department chair at the high school just the other day. And she's like, I wish I would've said something about how good we're doing. And our science team is doing well. And that assessment they take a few times at elementary, once at middle school, and then they take again their junior year, so.
Does that suggest then in your mind, and I'm asking you to speculate here, that the root cause or one of the root contributors to this is more curriculum-based? Do you think it's more of a, and now I'm speculating, a generational difference or? I just think when, when, you know, go back a generation, reading was, might have been something that was more prevalent, right? Couldn't just watch YouTube videos all day. Do you think, I'm asking you just speculate for me, what, what would cause the difference? And I guess I'm even interested is why women and men test so differently?
I think you're onto something with the generationally. And I, but I also think in likely at some point this year, I'll get to come back and talk more about this, if not this year, next year. As we go through our ELA, our, our English Language Arts Revision, there's a war out there about how to teach kids how to read. And over the last ten, fifteen years, there's really been a dominant model, Lucy Colkins model, which we employ here right now in, in Sycamore, that has kind of been what's, it's been accepted as almost a D-model nationwide. But what they're seeing right now is, is more and more people research that is that that model could sometimes lead to difficulties further down the road that we maybe don't notice. If I'm a second grade teacher and I'm, I might not see those yet. Because of just the way we build the schema around how to read, when they encounter more difficult texts further down the road, it starts to get really difficult for them. Because they don't have a toolset to necessarily break down a word or, or they just, just think of reading differently. So I think it's a combination. I think it's one, you're right. My son would much rather, he's seven, he'd much rather play a video game or watch YouTube than read a book. Although I'm still happy I can get him to read once in a while. So there's that piece. But then I also think what we're starting to see is some of that way we've taught reading coming to call. Now, you, you wouldn't see that in, you know, third, fourth grade because they're just learning that then. But as they get older and as we see students that maybe struggle a little bit, I think that's part and parcel, you know? A lot of people will say though, that the science test is, is primarily a reading test. And it's, it's, it's measuring students' ability to read scientific concepts, read charts and graphs. And on that, we have students that do amazing. So I think there's so much that goes into that. But I think you're right. There is, our culture has shifted away from, from reading a page. Their endurance is not what it used to be. Their ability to just sound words out isn't what it used to be. And that's, that's probably coming to call. And it's not just here, that's everywhere. I think that's across the nation right now. There's been so much conversation around how do we teach our kids to read? The state just came out with a, a new literacy plan that we're going to have to respond to and change a lot of what we currently do. But that's what we're working on right now. It's, it's a challenge, but it's exciting and I think our staff's ready for it. Cause they feel it themselves, you know? They know, they know that they want to do some of these things that they're learning about, that may be a little bit better.
Are the, um, teaching coaches helping revise the, the math curriculum as well?
So they'll, they, they. Yes, for sure. So Lisa Winters, primarily overseas, she's our elementary instructional math coach. She works really hard with them there. Andrea Sheehan's our ELA coach. And they work really hard in the elementary levels. Meanwhile, Beth Fitz and Ryder, Molly Momenteller, they're kind of more just generalists. So they assist in all this, but they don't have that necessarily content expertise. Both of them happen to be former English teachers. So they're invaluable as we look at that at the, at secondary level. But in math and that part, we're really lean on the expertise of the teachers. But yes, and I can't say enough of how helpful they were. When we went through day-to-days and worked with our elementary teams, almost every team wrote a goal with those coaches and said, here's the data that we see on our map score. This is something we wanna change. How can we work with you to see those results for our students? And so what'll be really interesting to see come winter, when we start to look at this next assessment, how many of those worked, how many of those didn't? And how was that impacting our students? That's sometimes one of the hardest, and I'm on a little bit of a tangent, I'll stop. But that's sometimes one of the hardest things to track is the impact of those instructional coaches because they do so much to help teachers. And then that teacher work has to translate to the student. But I think seeing what they did with that goal setting was huge. And maybe I can talk even some more about that with you in the future too.
Mike, I have a question for you. So I, as usual, I think you do a really great job presenting this information.
Thanks.
And I think it's really thorough. And in a short period of time, you cover a lot of ground.
Thank you.
Just from like a three hundred and sixty degree perspective, what do you think the board should do with this information?
That's a really good question. I want you to know it. I want you to be aware and I want you to ask questions about it. I think kind of like to Alex's point, to when you see numbers that don't jive, ask why, you know? And, and be able to say like, trust us. Cause we, you know, we know what we're doing. But I, sometimes we need that outside perspective to say like, hey, why is, why are we at thirty percent or forty percent? Is that good enough? You know, in some places, sure, but I think in a lot of places, no. And I'd hate for us to get kind of in that echo chamber of, we feel really good about something. You know how that goes. Like when you're in, living, reading something, sometimes you don't stop to think about how it looks like to an outside observer. So I think just asking those questions, being willing to challenge us at times, but also being willing to support us when we say, I think this is what the best route forward would be. I think that's probably the best way we can work with that data. Ask us to keep bringing it back to you. And I, I would love to bring back our winter results and talk about how some of that stuff looks. Whether it's in a meeting like this, whether it's through a board admin retreat or just something you put together that Steve shares. But I think it's important that you know that. That, that, these are some of the places where all of the work, I think you do so much of it. And, you know, being a central office, I, I see it too. Like you end up spending time talking about money and, and buildings and things, but like this is, this is why we're here. So to be able to kind of come back and see the fruits of your labor and know, we're moving the needle here and it's because of some of the decisions that we're making and how we're supporting our teachers. I think that's good for you to know as well. Yeah.
And you mentioned like we're kind of revamping some of our mathematics and other curriculum. One trick on here that I think is kind of odd is eighth graders passing algebra one. Is that something that our district's gonna be looking at as well? Or is this just an arbitrary thing that they throw on this website?
It is and it isn't. So I see, that's another, that's a really good question. Cause I think that, that could be, that could be the conversation for a really long time. And I think that could shape how we as a district like respond to that prompt. There are some districts that say, we are going to plant our flag and all of our eighth graders will have passed algebra. And they'll go into high school and they'll be ready for geometry. There are other districts that don't pay that much attention to that indicator and say, and, and I will just come right out and say, the camp I'm in is, I don't care where they're at, I want them to know the math. And so I think, you know, I've, I've worked in other districts, I've worked with other districts. And sometimes those groups that really wanna push them through algebra, sometimes that works great. But sometimes what you end up with and as students that show up to high school math, they take geometry that freshman year, they haven't seen algebra since eighth grade. Now they're in algebra two their sophomore year and they struggle. Because they just don't have as firm a grasp of that concept as you would hope. So I'm always in the camp of, I wanna meet that student where they are. But people see that indicator and go, what's going on here? So that's a really good question. And that might be one we wanna talk about. If we, if that's a, a place where we wanna shift our philosophy, something to talk about here, something to talk about with our staff. I think as of right now, we've really focused in on trying to support our fast runners, get them as far as we can. But those that are just kind of in their general class, we wanna make sure they have a firm grasp of the mathematics so that they're ready for whatever comes next. Yeah, good question.
How are you defining students with disabilities in, in this category?
So this case would be any student that has an IEP. An individualized education plan.
So if you have an individual plan for everyone, would they fall into the same category?
No, this would only be like the state mandated when they get, you have to have the doctor's note and yeah.
With the doctors, no, okay.
And like they've done all the, the, all of the steps to make sure that they qualify for an individualized education plan. When we talk more about like that learner-centered piece, it's not quite to that level. That's really more just me getting to know a student, how do I support them? But they don't have a documented learning disability or anything that might interfere with their ability to perform at the same level as their peers. Where these students have something on that, with, going on with them that would prohibit them from just naturally being at the same level as their peers.
So probably as, an additional special program might be beneficial for them. If they got extra help.
And we do that. And I, and then, and without getting too much further into the weeds, I think that's a reason why for Southeast, the data came back the way that it did. Because I think that we have a specialized program there. We have some of our leaf students there, some of our students that have some really significant behavioral challenges. And so when you've got kind of a, a condensed group there, especially with behavior that maybe is having a bad day or that isn't taking that test as serious as, as they could, I'm not trying to make excuses at all. But I think that group of students could make it harder. Not that they can't learn, not that they're not just as smart as their peers or with extra support couldn't be. But too, somebody asked earlier, like, do the kids just not take it seriously? I think that's a group where you really have to work hard to make sure they understand the gravity of that test. And unfortunately, without a conversation like this, someone picks up the Chronicle and looks at that paper and goes, what's going on there? Well, there's a lot more to the story, you know? Those teachers and those students are doing a lot of good things. And it's unfortunate that they get that label.
Was Sycamore unique in that all of the leaf students are at one school?
I don't think they were unique in that, no. I mean, every, every, every district approaches a little bit differently, but a lot of districts try to kind of localize those resources.
But that wouldn't skew our data.
A little bit it does, a little bit.
Yeah, it looks like you could hone in on the with disabilities group on the report card side, but you can't exclude that group and look at the data without it either.
Right. And, and you don't, and I, I by no means wanna suggest like, hey, it's this group's fault. Like that's not what I'm saying and I don't want anybody to take that. But as we look at just different student strengths and weaknesses, like how do we support every single one of our kids? Or public education? Every student that walks through our doors, we have to make sure we're doing our due diligence to support. So not at all that we're like, oh, it's just those kids. That's not at all what I'm saying. But just, they have a special set of needs and that we wanna make sure that we're addressing. I think we've worked really hard to do that, but make sure we're not missing anything.
Finally, do you think there'd be a valuable metric to look at students GPA and growth there at a, at a high school level since they don't even have, well, besides the SAT, which they just take twice? They don't have a test they take annually?
Yeah, I think GPA gets tricky because there's some of it, some of it's subjective, right? And so as much as we try, if, if I'm teaching English and you're teaching English, as much as we try to be on the same page, we still have two different brains. So we could grade, you could grade a paper with a B and I could grade it with an A. So the grades become difficult to kind of really measure, but it's a point, it's a, it's a data point. It'd be silly for us not to look at that. But I, I don't think it sometimes bears as much weight as this, that it's less subjective and every student's having the same experience. But definitely something to look at.
Yeah, I'd just be interested to see how it's.
I tried to stay quiet, I apologize.
That last ten minutes is our fault.
Hey, no, no fault. You all know, I'll talk about this stuff all night.
I'm just gonna bring to the board's attention that if we were going by the time limits that we set, we doubled the time that we, that we had set out for this. So I would've had to respond to many of your questions and many of your thoughts. So, you know, it's, 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 it's something we need to really think about think about before we make a decision to go one way or another, so. This is a good trial that kind of shows, I mean, I, I don't think we talked about anything that wasn't extremely pertinent to what, to what we do here. But yet, we would have lost twenty minutes of that presentation if we had a timed agenda.
And while it's not my place, I, I do think I could come back and bring mutually individually, and maybe that would help with that. So these are some significant topics, and to tie them all together, we're going to have a lot of questions. There's some pros and cons to that, but.
We didn't have access to the presentation beforehand either.
Exactly, and that's.
Yeah, I don't want to completely derail and jump into another topic, but, I mean, maybe it's appropriate to ask, because we have a mic here right now.
Yeah.
Is that if this was out there earlier.
Yep.
Is it, is it cumbersome on you to answer questions before the presentation? Like what is your opinion of that?
Not at all.
Especially because on this, you would, you would probably get a handful of questions prior.
Yep, I actually was talking, if you don't mind, with Mr. Wilder about that today, and I, you know, as we do try to condense some things, and this is all on me, I finished this this morning. But if I could have gotten this to you earlier, so you could look at it, and maybe even say, these are some questions I'd really like to hear Mike discuss at the meeting, I could tailor a little bit more to that. Not that there won't be questions, though, there should always be, but I do think if I get this to you earlier, you have a chance to look at it a little bit more, come up with some of those questions, I can be more focused, and Lord knows I'm a rambler, so the more you can help me be focused, I will. Well, I appreciate your time, and like I said, if there's any other questions, feel free to reach out, I'm happy to help.
Thank you.
Yep.
So I've got two items on the, on the agenda for the board tonight. The first is the twenty-fourth, twenty-five district calendar. So this is first reading, no action, I'm not asking you to take action tonight. Some things I'm going to have on the screen, so I can see the screen a little bit better. So when we develop the calendar, I meet with the committee, it's got a demonstration, it's that's the leadership, then we take it to the district leadership team. After I get feedback from everybody, then I share it with the SCA calendar representatives, go back and forth a little bit, until we get to a point where we're ready to, to present to the board, which is where we're at tonight. Made one additional change after meeting with the SCA calendar representatives. Both of the teacher institutes at the beginning of the year, we'll have two days at our teachers institutes. Usually we've done district institute first and then building institute, this year we're going to flip that. Had that request from SCA, ran them by the district leadership team, and so we're going to make that change. You won't see that on the calendar though, because both of those first two days are teacher institutes. The only other significant change in the calendar for next year is that the regional office of education holds a district or, excuse me, countywide institute day. They do that every other year, and we missed that last year. We know it's coming next year, so we incorporated that, but it's always that, I believe it's the second Friday in October, it's the Friday before Columbus Day. Well, they do that on the second Friday of the month, typically we would take, do pumpkin PDM on that last Friday, kind of coincides with Pumpkin Fest. We have sessions and the institute in that morning, there's a little bit of flexibility in the afternoon. That helps with some of the events that happen in the school, especially in the fieldhouse at the high school. Pumpkin Fest weekend, we'll work around, I've already talked to Mr. Carrick, who works with the music boosters to facilitate that. He's a little crazy, but he's confident we can make that happen, we've done that before. That's the only real significant change, everything else is pretty much similar to what it was last year, other than, and the dates obviously being a little bit different. The other thing I would draw to your attention is we pushed the beginning of school back a week this year. So this, about every four or five years, it's kind of the way it goes, you know, the, the beginning of school kind of creeps up, you have a leap year or two thrown in there, and then everything kind of resets and then back the year, or back the week. This is the year where we're moving it back a week. So that's the other thing you'll notice on that, pushed the end of school back a little bit also, but really everything else in the calendar throughout the year is pretty similar to, to what we've had the last couple of years. Again, not asking for approval tonight, I'll bring it back to the board in December for final approval. But you've got a chance to look at new packets, any questions about the calendar for me?
I don't think so, but it usually serves us well to post it and wait for comments to come in. Sometimes there are.
I'll work with communications department, so, so we'll make sure that it's out in the public to see. And then if there's anything significant, of course, we'll take a look at that, and if there's anything that becomes a change in particular, that those things as well.
One thing I did notice, I think Mike, maybe somebody will say something about, so I'll say something about now. It looks like the last day of school is tentatively on Monday. I know we'll probably end up having makeup days because they're still days, but you can look at it. I know somebody might decide to look at.
If I remember correctly, I had a copy of the calendar with me.
Monday, June second, two hour release.
Yeah, the last days for students is that Monday, lots of different teachers is that, is that Tuesday, so not ideal. So we'll apply school on final schedule, things like that at the end of the year, as well as all the schools at the end of the year. To write, and we may have a couple of days thrown in there for emergency days that, that offset that. So that was, that was part of the conversation kind of throughout the process, not ideal, but of course you don't, nothing's going to be like either, so we could kind of rectify it all. Any other questions for me about the calendar? Okay. The next item I have is regular board meeting schedule. This is a topic that we've talked about the last couple of meetings. So I met with Mr. Donbeck on November twentieth, talked about what an agenda might look like for a monthly meeting. The agenda won't look necessarily a lot different, there are a couple of things that I, I want to point out. One of the things that the board knows that the audience doesn't know is that we put some time allocations on tonight's meeting, just as kind of a guideline, as Mr. Donbeck talked about. Just to, to kind of give the board a feel for, okay, if we start to try to take two meetings, condense them into one, not do less work, but do, do the work differently, how can we do that and still be effective, productive, and not go till eleven o'clock at night when it starts to get harder and harder to stay focused and make good decisions? So Mr. Donbeck and I met on the twentieth, we talked about that, I've got several bullet points that I, that I want to walk through tonight. First of all, if the board moves to one meeting a month, I would recommend the, the last Tuesday of the month. That's the meeting that the board approves bills, and it would really help the business office to have that begin the month. They can get everything ready, the board can approve the bills, and then move on to the next one. December and March are a little crazy, we have one meeting in both of those months currently. It's the second Tuesday of the month. I would recommend keeping those the way that they are for this year, but look at moving those to the third Tuesday, you know, later in the month for next year. Again, gets us close to the end of the month for the business office, but because of winter break and spring break, the district will be closed on that fourth Tuesday. So I recommend leaving those alone for this year, but next year, look at the third Tuesdays of the month in both of those months. Talked a little bit about the, the time allocations and the administrative content in the board docs tonight. Two things, so we couldn't set an overall time limit for the board meeting, because of public comment, audience participation, and a closed session. Both of those are portions of the meeting that we don't have complete control over. Closed session, we talked about the personnel report, anything else that might come up in, in that meeting. Audience participation, there is a board policy that limits that to thirty minutes, but as you guys saw tonight, which is a pretty typical meeting, you know, a lot of times we don't have any audience participation at all. Even at the meetings, now that brought up COVID, even, even at the meetings where we do have audience participation, it's pretty short. So we didn't set a time allocation for that, but just that the board knows there is a, a limit on audience participation. It gets a little harder to see, I apologize for that, I was trying to squeeze everything into one slide here. So we just talked about this when Mr. Rice was kind of wrapping up his presentation. One of the things that will change, again, we're not doing less business, we're just doing business differently. So one of the things we'll start to do is get the agenda and the board packet out a week ahead of time. So you will have this slide deck with the information in it. I'm as guilty as Mr. Rice was, I was finishing these slides this morning. Our commitment is that we won't do that in the future, that we'll get everything out a week in advance. You can formulate questions, you can ask questions. I've encouraged you to send me an email with any question that you have, and I can write that to the appropriate person. So if it's a question about teaching and learning, let me know, I'll get it to Mr. Rice. If it's a question about technology, let me know, I'll get that to Dr. Valentine. So you'll have that information in advance, perfectly normal, if you have questions during the week, let us know, we'll get those answered. Some of those questions may be things that we can just respond to a single board member. Sometimes what you'll see is that I'll field a question, I'll get the response, but we'll share it with the entire board. Board members can't share that, that stuff, it would be in violation of the Meetings Act, but if I get the response, I can send it out to the entire board along with the question. Other times, questions kind of come up that I think really merits some discussion publicly. So we may just incorporate it into the presentation, we had a question this week, it was about GPA, good question, here's the response. So we'll kind of use our best judgment on, on questions that come up. How the agenda gets put together is still the same, so if a board member wants something to go on the agenda, talk to, you know, Mr. Donbeck, let him know, let me know. And we'll consider getting it on the agenda. Couple last things that I would encourage the board to consider. There, there are some things that can continue to kind of make the, the meetings a little bit more efficient. Have to do these things, this is board business, not superintendent business, but just some things to think about. So one thing that can be done is moving the personnel report to the consent agenda. Just so you know, if you do that, you'll see the personnel report in advance, just like everything else that goes out a week ahead of time. If you have a question about a specific hiring or resignation, or whatever, whatever the case may be, that can be polled and voted on separately after, you know, a closed session conversation. The recognition of students is awesome, we had a great crowd here tonight. They did, they hardly ever stay for the rest of the meeting, we got some stragglers tonight that stuck around, we appreciate that. It's great to see them here, it's great to, for them to be recognized, but in interest of efficiency, one of the things that the board could do is, is, you know, we could write letters that go home congratulating, you know, individual members. Football team was recognized tonight, there were three players, I think, and Mr. Ballster had a really long list of, of students that weren't here and got recognized. So would it make the board meeting more effective or more efficient? It would, it would also make sure that every student in those groups gets recognized as well. The communications correspondence, informational items could be removed from the agenda altogether, those things would still go in the board packet, just not something that comes up for discussion during the meeting. Again, these are suggestions, thanks for the board considering, it's not my decision. In order to, to maintain the meetings, you know, eliminating meeting at every building, but incorporating the building presentations, the building reports in a different manner, and this kind of came up at, at the meeting in North Elementary. Whether they're eliminated or we do it differently, I think what your chair's comment was, would like to see how things work when students are in the school. Certainly welcome to tour the schools, let me know, I can get in touch with the principal, we can make sure that, you know, it's a day that's kind of conducive to that, not a day that maybe we're testing math, doing math testing. And then one thing I would recommend if we, if we do that is that give me a chance to work with the, the leadership team and kind of reimagine what those presentations look like to the board, just so that the board is still getting that information, but maybe in a slightly different way, and, and I think one of the follow-up comments was, we're not going to all elementary schools, could the elementary team put a presentation together? So consider things like that and their impact on the agenda. If the board decides to move to, to one meeting a month, we just need to notify the public, there's a board policy that, that addresses that, there would need to be a ten-day notice. So I would encourage the board between now and December, kind of mull over things that I've shared, things that you guys have talked about, and just give me direction one way or the other. We're going to move to one meeting, I think we could do that as early as January. And if the board gave me that direction that I can work with Kelly, Mrs. Vins, to get that, that public notice out, an announcement before it's changed and straightened the meeting schedule, and we could start that in January. Any questions for me or discussion amongst the board members?
I'm not opposed to monthly meetings, however, I do have some concerns about the time tax. I just think every meeting varies, and sometimes, like tonight, it was, I, I think there was some great discussion had with Mr. Rice there, and I hate to just say, oh, we're done, you know, it's been twenty minutes, we can't have that, because we, we set a, set a limit there. I mean, it's only eight twenty-six now, and it seems like it's been a longer meeting, I wouldn't be opposed to meeting until, I guess, whenever we need, as long as it takes to get through everything that we have on the agenda, but that's just my two cents.
I, I do want to come back to that, because I meant to, to talk about it during my comments, I think that's a really good point. And the reason I go on time allocation as opposed to time limits is because I knew that in some cases we'd under, then in some cases we're probably going to go on, over, and one of the things that Jim and I talked about during our meeting, I, I shared an agenda that, that another school district uses that does have time allocations on it. And I spoke with that superintendent, because they're moving from two meetings a month to one meeting a month. So I talked about the time limits and a couple of other things, time allocation. And she said they do exactly what we did tonight, which was, there's an allocation for that, but if the discussion is good, it's, it's not a hard and fast rule. You know, there, there may be times that the board can police itself, or the president can, can, can police the board a little bit, but I felt like Jim handled it really well, it was a great discussion. We had some time, because we saved some time in other areas. I would stress to the board, unless you seven really want those to be hard and fast time limits, we'll continue to put time allocations on there, and it'll take us a little bit of time, I knew Mr. Rice might go over twenty minutes.
Come on, like twenty-two is a question, I didn't, I didn't work hard.
I could go over my time allocation as well, but if the discussion is still fruitful and, and going well, you know, I would say in the long run, going over that time limit isn't necessarily a bad thing. And this is, this is going to take, assuming that the board makes a change, it's going to take a little bit of news to you, right? Leadership team is going to take some time to, to get things ready a week ahead of time. And we'll have to work through those time allocations a little bit, but I think having them on there is a good rule of thumb. And then it's really kind of up to the board to police itself, as to whether or not the discussion is worth going over a little bit, or, you know, maybe we're kind of going out of bounds or spinning our wheels if it is not going to be.
I think it's appropriate to set the expectation, especially for presenters, to know about how much time we want to spend going over it. I agree that having the flexibility for us to ask questions, but again, hopefully we've had the time to ask potentially explosive time questions, you know, with the week prior to, to at least hammer that out, or decide, okay, we're going to bring that topic back the following month to dive, to continue with the conversation, and maybe there's a vote parliamentary sort of procedure that we'll have in place for setting or cutting it off, but motioning to have it brought back to the next meeting to continue the discussion or whatever that looks like.
Could you be a lot more done with that leave notice, or do we do?
I would, I mean, would it be regardless of what the board's decision is on monthly or biweekly, could we still get that out a week in advance? Or it'd be unduly burdensome for you guys?
I think it's asking a lot, to get it out a week in advance, twice a month, in some cases three times a month. Now, that third meeting is, is a town hall or board admin tree, it's not as much prep, but I think it's asking a lot, you know, because as soon as you're done with one meeting, Kelly here, she could kind of share this, because she actually drafts the agenda first, I take a look at it, and send it to, to Mr. Donbeck. Continuing to do that twice a month, it can just get hard, because there's a lot of other things that you're juggling. But if we went to one meeting a month, I think it's really reasonable for, for the board to expect the leadership team and administration to be able to do that.
I'll make a motion, we go to one meeting a month, starting in January.
I would second that, we don't, we don't, we don't have an item on, on the agenda for voting.
We don't, if, if the board wants to give me that direction, we can start preparing and then, and then make it a formal vote in December, but.
Is the only way we can post a vote, if it's an agenda item?
Yeah.
We, we denote it as a, or designate it as an action item on the agenda, if we didn't do that, didn't think to do that, to ask Kelly to do that, sorry about that.
So under the, because it's under the report section?
Well, it doesn't have the asterisk, asterisk at the end of it, that's why we know it's an action item.
And I mean, we're back in two weeks, an official vote at that point, I mean, nothing, nothing delayed, that's what we get, yeah, so.
Just took us three meetings to talk about a vote, to have one meeting. I'm just, only in a bureaucracy could it take so much time to decide about the time.
They were still probably a little faster than the state, if, if the board was in that direction, but I understand, yeah.
I just, I believe as a school system, we should hold ourselves responsible for the mechanisms that we have in place, the procedures we have in place to get things done. I think this is a great step in that direction of having more defined mechanisms. I think a critical piece, I'm, I'm again, not really interested in time allocations, it's fine, but I don't think having constraints is important. I think more than that is us defining reports, so like in Mike Rice's instance, the expectation for the board to get information about curriculum, I think is absolutely a good one. How that information is conveyed to the board, I think that's what we as a board need to decide, and I think it should be, I personally. And I think it should be, I personally don't think it should be in advance of a meeting, so that way at the meeting, a discussion can be had about the information that's provided in the report. And I think that would save a lot of time. Um, and that would also give the public a lot of advanced notice about issues and the absolute ins and outs of those issues. Um, so if they didn't wanna come and have public discussion about it or make public comment about it, they would be coming to this board meeting with as much information as we're coming to. Um, and that, I think, makes it less burdensome on the public to be engaged. So, twofold, right? One is standardized reports. Um, that data should be stagnant. And then the other piece is gonna be, again, meeting in a, a more, I think, concise and dictative way, which is when we leave a board meeting, it's, it should be very clear that it's just discussion and the information collecting stage was done in advance. That way, we don't find ourselves talking about something in October and deciding on it in December. We could've had that information in October and decided in October, and we'd be three months ahead of it. And that's not a fault on anyone. I think that's just the way the system currently works, because that's how it is. Call me a disruptor. That's my observation.
I would agree with Michael. And the one thing I would add that I, um, brought up to Mr. Wilder was that I wondered about if the conference's other districts will have a shared file that contains all of the questions that board members asked, asked about the upcoming agenda. And then they can all review each other's questions in advance. The superintendent would send that out to all the board members, so they could see what other board members thought of. And if there was a question that maybe they didn't think of, they could begin processing that to discuss at the meeting. And it wouldn't need to be spontaneously brought up at the meeting. It would all have been done in advance and people would have time to research and prepare to have a more productive discussion. Um, I think that's something that we could look into. And also, another thing I learned about at the conference was, um, more frequent subcommittee meetings that have, uh, more of a set, um, goal. So, for instance, if we were to have a curriculum fin- um, meeting, we'd have a set change we'd like to make to the curriculum. If we have a, um, finance subcommittee meeting, we'd be maybe discussing the, the levy and actually working on making any adjustments to it. Um, so there's some more concrete action that, that comes out of these meetings as opposed to more informational discussion that we could have, um, electronically in advance. That's just my opinion, um, going to.
I think you already touched on that first one. And what you're proposing i- is, is a, is a change of structure for the board to act, um, as a constituent of a body as opposed to one body for each decision. So, um, there's, there's committees, there's, there, there are different ways to structure the board. In a lot of places, um, the board is structured so that, uh, there are committees that do the work of the board and then bring back that work to the board and, uh, report to the board. And then the board, uh, basically, uh, unless there's some real problem, the board, uh, accepts their report and acts on it. Um, that's not how we, we work as a committee of the whole, not, not as a board of separate committees. We haven't in the past at least. I mean, you'd be talking, that's more than changing your agenda. That's changing the way you, you do business or another way. And if, if, I think if the board were gonna do that, we, we would need some kind of outside guidance to, um, get us, get us through that and get us organized so that we could do it in the right way, if we indeed chose to do it that way.
The only reason I brought that up is it, it seemed that it gave board members and the board as a whole more, um, buy-in in decisions. Um, currently, my observation is a lot of stuff, a lot of decisions are made by administration and then brought to us to either approve or reject. Um, a structure like that allows a board member to, um, be in the room for some of those key, um, decisions, uh, which I think would be perhaps beneficial.
Well, you have to consider what the, what the board's job is. Board's job is to hire the superintendent. That's the board's job. Uh, that's all we do. And then we monitor the, the superintendent and the administration. Um, and as long as the superintendent is performing properly, um, everything is good. If there's a problem, then the board has to act and has to remove the superintendent. Um, y- you know, we, we tend to here as a board really get down into the nitty-gritty and add onto the dance floor and, and we like to tell the administration what to do. And that's not our role. Our role is to, uh, is simply to advise the superintendent. And then the superintendent, it's up to the superintendent to, um, make those decisions and, and, and make those, uh, ideas that we, uh, are supporting, uh, happen if he's, if he believes they're in the best interest of, of the district.
Well, I didn't necessarily mean that we'd be in, when I brought up, for example, the levy, that the, uh, the finance committee would be saying, we're gonna levy thirty-six million, eight hundred forty-five thousand yada, yada, yada dollars. They would just be there to, to be a part of the discussion or at least, um, witness it so that they could report it back, so we have just some more.
And, and do exactly pretty much what Nicole did for us.
Well, that's, but that's what we do right now. I mean, that's what the finance subcommittee, at least that Chris and I did for the last two years, was exactly what you're describing. We were there to get the more detailed information from Nicole's that we had an understanding and then report back to the board what the important aspects were just to add some gravity to the, to the overall meeting time.
Well, that's, that's all I'm meaning. Just doing a little more off tonight. We haven't even, since I've been on the board, we haven't had a fire.
Sounds like you've been having a attorney. Well, and, and you weren't on the finance committee for, you know, part of your tenure on the board. Chris has served in that. So, um, you know, I think the quarterly meetings work pretty well. And, you know, we've done this job for a while here in, in another district and I recognize the responsibility that I have and, and the accountability that comes with my job. But I don't get involved with the discussions with, you know, on the, on the tax levy and that detail with Nicole. Part of my job is to delegate that to her, delegate teaching and learning pieces and the HR to, to surround it. My job is to stay on top of that and make sure it's, it's working and done properly. But I'm not sure that more frequent meetings, that there would be a whole lot to talk about it. Um, having done the tax levy in a previous position before, there's not as much, um, to it, especially when you've done it over and over again. So, um, the other piece is the reality is that there's, begins to be a feeling of people looking over your shoulder. Um, and I think that's not always a comfortable feeling. So, I, I would just encourage the board to keep on their mind as well.
Um, I'm okay with monthly meetings, but, um, with, with time allocations, not limits. But I really feel like if we had slides to look at tonight instead of hearing the wonderful presentation we heard, that we wouldn't get the same out of it. So, with something like, there's probably a lot of things we could review in advance, but I don't think this would've been one of them.
Totally agree.
I don't know if there's a, 'cause most of the stuff is done through Google Docs, correct? I mean, is that the, the assumption? Did you hear about any districts that were using Google Docs and let's say an open meetings Act compliant way to review those ahead of time and be able to go in and be, you know, because we would all have access to those documents, be able to just put, you know, inline comments or questions there, so you'd see who else had posted a question about something, so you didn't have to be redundant about it, knew that was gonna get addressed? Is there a way to do that?
Well, that's what the district was doing, is all the board members were in one Google Doc and they would just add their questions as they came up. Um, and I guess their reasoning for that being all compliant was that there wasn't any discussion in the doc. It was simply just copying and pasting your question.
Right, so there may just be, have to be rules about how those comments are posted.
I think we'd, we'd have to run that by the attorneys.
I'd, I would wanna do that just so that we've got a good legal basis, hey, that this is a good idea.
'Cause it certainly seems like doing business to me.
Mm-hmm. Um, I, I think a really safe way is those, those questions come to me. I share questions and answers. I think sh- you know, sharing all the questions and answers with the entire board, I'm not opposed to that at all.
Yeah, that's what I mean. I don't think that that's a good idea for us to do. That was the practice I learned. I think having the superintendent, delegating that responsibility to the superintendent would be a much safer.
I, I only ask 'cause I think it's a, a more efficient use of time to be able to just point to something. I have a question about this as opposed to, on page four, bullet three, the third line. I think this would, you know, could you explain this? Or in this graphic, I don't understand. You're spending a hundred words trying to spin up something as opposed to just circle. What is this?
Well, it would be way more efficient, but if we can't do it legally, we can't do it.
We'll read that for our turies and just at least get a legal opinion on it so then.
As long as the board members aren't responding to everybody else's comments, then there wouldn't be some other discussion. It's just, it's no different than be writing the question and sending, you sending that question to everyone. As far as the other items, I still like getting together and honoring the students in, in person personally. I don't, tonight's turnout was rather poor, but it has not always been poor. So, I don't know if this was just a unique circumstance with timing or weather, but I like that we do it. If we wanted to do it differently, I'm open to that. I don't know if I'm just crazy about telling them not to come and just sending a letter to everybody, but.
I still like seeing, um, getting everybody to clap. I mean, it's just, it, it feels more like, you know, the students and something out of a comparison something.
Yeah, if we wanna do it as an assembly or some other sort of bigger quarterly or, you know, spring, fall ceremony and open to other alternatives, but I'd hate to see it just completely go away since we just started looking for this.
We, we've been doing this for many, many years.
Oh, the medals thing, it's been, it's been three or four years.
Oh, oh, man. Way before that. Yeah.
I love Rebecca the medal. We weren't doing it when we started.
That's possible, but it had to be shortly after. Um, but we are, we do seem to be trending less and less in terms of attendance when it comes to, to try to honor, so.
Maybe 'cause they're, it's the same medal three times a year.
Trying to think of a. Yeah, trying to think of a way to spice it up a little bit.
Consolidation.
We used to do it, back in the day, we used to do it, uh, two, uh, twice, months e- each semester and do, you know, the, the sports based on semesters.
Oh, Adrian was touching on that.
I'm not important tonight, but I'd add that as a future agenda item to a, for, for, uh, celebrating.
Yeah, I mean, if we can think of a, you know, a, a better way or a way that's, um,
uh, designed to bring more people in, we could.
Or maybe we're celebrating their progression as a profile of a Spartan achievement.
Thank you.
Anything else on this side?
Because of the compliance, uh, I like the idea of positive questions and having everybody have access to that at that point, so we can see what's been asked and what's been answered. Yeah, definitely we wanna make sure we're airtight on that before we move on.
Um, you know, one of the things I can do is, um, prepare a document that, that, that I can own and can edit, share with the board and then potentially public that, with some, sometimes those questions address confidential information. Um, but allow access, we can limit access to, you know, just a viewer, commenter, or an editor. And if you, if the board members had access only as viewers, so you couldn't make a comment, I mean, it literally isn't possible, that might give us the, the state due to, we need, though, I'll, I'll ask that question legal.
Well, then we move on, I guess, to the next item, which is, uh, open discussion and future agenda items. Um.
Do we need to make a motion about the reading of the calendar?
We, we don't actually have.
Because we didn't ask anybody when the wave is done.
No, the system first, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's served us well in the past to ki- to kinda let that fly out there and see if, uh, if anyone has one.
So, for I, my reference, um, the asterisks is the indicator of when a vote can be had?
Mm-hmm.
And in our board procedure, it just defin- it just defines that as Robert's rules of the rule of faith. Should we maybe make a policy revision to our board procedure that we can be had?
Designates action item roll call, so.
No, I see the asterisk. I'm just curious where that is in the board policy. Should we maybe talk about that again?
Oh, I'm sure it's in there somewhere. It's, um, oh, it's got.
Well, call point of order, but it's, um.
Out of the book. I, I, it might be a practice and, and not in board policy, but I'll, I'll do some research.
And Robert's rules would stipulate that we could, as a board, take a majority?
Law of the state of Illinois, Open Meetings Act takes precedent. And that requires that there be a designation of anything that's gonna be voted on in public session.
It's in the agenda.
Yeah.
So, we, we've put an item on the agenda for public purview, which by that measure would be something that we could cast about. And our policy doesn't forbid it. And our policy, the first route is rule.
Start, start with the, look up the Illinois Open Meetings Act.
Are we not gonna do that right now?
Well, when we're at a standstill.
So, your, your point is that we can only vote on things that have this asterisk?
Yes.
And that's something that we can't change with board policy?
Yes.
Could we have the asterisk that we had?
I mean, I suppose you could if you wanted to. It doesn't make any sense, but.
Well, it's gonna give us the out, 'cause we didn't vote on the calendar reading, but it has the asterisk.
Right.
Right, so if we just add the asterisk to everything, then it gives us the ability to vote on things in the future to s- again, streamline the process.
Well, all right, then, whatever you say.
So, could we take a vote then on the, uh, items related to going to one board meeting a month? A motion, did we add a second?
No. No, we can't.
But in subsequent meetings, if we add the asterisks to every item, then we could, I think, is what we're, we're, is what Mike was trying to.
Sure.
Is that what you mean?
That's fine. It's a mandate.
I mean, you can do that.
Don't we only have one meeting next month anyway?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I.
I guess just for practice.
It, it makes no sense to me to vote on open discussion issues, observations, questions.
I'd like to see something good, how it's gonna be, like regarding the time and regarding certain presentations. I mean, I'm fine with one meeting a month, but I don't, I think we have enough time to allocate time to things that are really important. For example, this, uh, presentation tonight. That was really important for us to hear. It's a, it's a big problem in, in our state, and I know we're working on it, but that so many kids are not proficient in math and reading. And I just feel like looking at a slide, I mean, he did such a good presentation really in a short amount of time. So, I would just like to see something in writing to vote on that, yes, we're gonna, we're gonna go to once a month. We're gonna do most of the stuff we talked about, but could we put some kind of provision in there that if we have a presentation on an important subject like this, that it's done for the public to hear and not through slides? That's all. That's all. But other than that, I'm fine with everything.
We can do that.
I do, my concern is if we're gonna meet once a month and then we can't vote on issues in that meeting that we discuss without advance discussion of voting on that issue, I think that is gonna be a huge roadblock to us moving quickly. And I think ultimately the goal here is for us to take out a meeting, but move at the same pace. And so, my, my concern is that the process that our board's making decisions takes too long. And it's evidenced by the fact that motion in a second before general consensus has to take another several weeks to still come to fruition. And I don't see anything in our board policy that prohibits it. And so, I guess I'm just interested in understanding. And so I guess I'm just interested in understanding why that process exists.
My previous district, we designated it differently, it wasn't an asterisk, but we put, you know, the action, you know, item, but only on, o- only following items that the board intended to take action on. Um, and the legal advice was making sure the public knew that that was, uh, something that you were going to take action on, not just something that was a discussion. Of course, it's a different district, different, different fact that something that was written in their board policy. Um, you could put an aster- asterisk after everything, and that way the board, the, the public knows that you're potentially gonna vote on everything.
That seems like a really good solution.
Or could it, could you take it a step further and say, could it be a potential action item? And then an action item is concrete that we're gonna take action on this, so that way the public could, could discern.
I think you start to create confusion if you do, if you do that.
Yeah, much confusion.
But I, I would suggest, board's decision, not mine, I would suggest that it's, that we continue with the, the practice of designating things that the board intends to take action on or just asterisk, asterisk, star, everything.
Can we ask for a star?
It's up to the, it's up to the board.
And I, I would say final action, the definition, final action shall be preceded by a public recital of the nature of the matter being considered and other information, uh, that will inform the public of the business being conducted. So, I would just say, that's a little vague right there, but I would have to dig a little deeper to see what else is expanded upon, other information. If that's, that's a legal question.
Yeah, to be in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. So.
I'm gonna call the attorneys on the share doc anyway, I can, I can get a recommendation on, uh,
Yeah, I think, I think we should do that.
Uh, to, uh, just make sure we're doing that legal.
Yep, because our policy does refer to the Open Meetings Act, and the Open Meetings Act does take precedent over Robert's rules because it's the law of the state of Illinois. And, um, you know, I, I think we have to live by that Open Meetings Act. All public institutions in the state of Illinois have to live by that.
I think that the workaround is just addressing via OMA that all items could in fact be voted on. And if that's locktied legal, it seems like a way to streamline our one meeting a month, so, that's my view.
Seems disingenuous to me, but that's the, uh, will of the, of the board.
I just don't know how much official, um, board group required by the administration to try and, um, ensure that those is given, because there's, there may be additional, and we have to do additional steps to take if we're including an asterisk by everything, because then it has to be a little vague to the public. I'm about to say, is it a bad idea, I'm just saying there might be additional steps on it to, to ensure compliance.
Yeah, I have seen, like you said, I mean, I'm not sure it would be that confusing to just say we could take action or we're going to take action, I don't know. Um, and just see if that's an option, I, I, fair, I'm fairly confident I've seen it as practice in other districts. And I could get more specifics, but just see if that's another option, so we have three, three different options we could take, um, choose to take. And I would like to make that a future agenda item as well, just understand the options.
I can, I can run that by legal also, when I'm, I'm talking to them about, uh, the share doc and just how to designate for action one way or the other.
All, all I can find quickly is that it says the requirement of a regular meeting agenda shall not preclude the consideration of items not specifically set forth in the agenda. That's about as helpful as I can find, anything quickly. But seems as how our decision tonight or at the next meeting doesn't affect the implementation of the decision. I have a problem differing until legal come back to this.
Right, I agree.
Sounds good to me.
So I don't even know where we are anymore, the agenda.
Uh, but we didn't make a motion on the calendar reading, which is fine, so we are.
Right.
We discussed the regular board meeting schedule. So we're, I think, down to open discussion, future agenda items, which we've gotten into already, but uh, I don't know if there are any other open discussion issues, observations, or questions that are.
Is there an update on the strategic plan design?
No.
You could look at down the road, I guess it's not a direct question or just a circling back.
Surveys, uh, I think it closes Wednesday, um, so we'll start gathering and looking through that, that information. So, might, uh, feel that from before to in December.
And then, I, this, Iro- ironically ties back to, um, board action. I would just like to go over what items the board approves and what items they don't. For example, I saw on social media that substitute pay, um, was increased, and I wasn't aware of that, um, in advance. I just wanna know what the board is required to know in advance, what the board would like to know in advance, and then just what the prac- practice currently is to see if all of those three things align.
I think that's a, we've gone back and forth in multiple emails about a couple of different things and, and had some discussion about that. What I would, and I saw, thought about this, and what I'd actually suggest is that the next board retreat, um, can reach out to, uh, it, because we've got some ch- some, some new board members as well, do a board governance, um.
Yeah, I think that would be extremely helpful.
Seminar workshop.
Yeah, workshop, I, I'm drawn, drawn like I'm a maid, but that's one of the things that they address, have sat through those before, and that's one of the things they address. Um, whose job is it, what gets approved, what, you know, what's delegated, things like that.
I, no, I, just, just approval, I'm just talking about approval, it's not necessarily the board is picking the amount of a pay increase, but just what the board approves, um, on our consent agenda and then what we don't. Just getting some more clarification on that would be very helpful.
Yeah, I think they can do that, sure.
Yeah.
Reach out to Laura Martinez about that.
Yeah, if people are badly indeed of that.
I think a board self-evaluation would be something that would be helpful, I've mentioned that here, I think it still would be helpful.
But do they do those in conjunction?
Yeah. Usually they do.
Yeah. I'll talk to Laura about that, too.
Future agenda items?
What would that mean to be a future agen- agenda item, having, uh, the, the retreat or, um, bringing someone from RNSB to?
No, she would do that work at a, at the, for the, the retreat, the special meeting day that's already set aside, and that's in, in January.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, let me see if she's available that day. In a lot of times if she's not, there's another IASB Field Services Director that can do that. Um, but that's not necessarily a future agenda item for a regular meeting, we would just conduct that work at a special meeting.
Other future agenda items? Is there a motion to go into executive session for the consideration of matters related to the appointment, employment, discipline, or dismissal of personnel, purchase, or needs of real estate and imminent litigation?
So moved?
Moved in second or roll call?
James, is that you?
Yeah.
Um, Shiloh?
Yes.
Koppel?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Kratos?
Yes, sorry.
Jones, yes, Dombeck?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we're going to executive session, and then we return back in. All right, we're back in, uh, open session. Uh, is there a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
So moved.
Seconded. Moved in seconded, roll call.
DeVito?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Kratos?
Yes.
Jones, yes. Dombeck?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Koppel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Is there a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Seconded.
On favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.